And she specifically asked that I thank the members of the Wilmington Police and Fire Department for their heroic efforts in their family's time of need. And so I would ask that everybody here join me in a moment of silence as we send our thoughts and prayers to Judy and her family. Thank you. And so I'll do the very best I can, and I know Judy may or may not be watching, and I want to let her know that we're thinking of her, and we're praying for her and her family tonight. With that, I would like to move on to item number two, which is the transmitting of Treasury warrants. We have several. Treasury warrant 202328, Treasury warrant 202328 Wires, Treasury warrant 2128A, Treasury warrant 202329, Treasury warrant 202329 Wires 29A, Treasury warrant 202330, 202330 Wires, Treasury warrant 30A. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion's been made in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of January 9th, 2023. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to table those minutes until Chairman O'Connell is available to vote on them as well.
We have a motion to table the minutes. Is there a second? Motion's been seconded. No discussion under a motion to table. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Those will be tabled. Thank you. And our first appointment tonight is with Town Manager Jeff Hall for his presentation of the annual budget, this year's FY24 budget. Before he begins, I want to thank him and his administrative team for all their work leading up to tonight. I want to thank all the department heads and all the employees who have contributed to this presentation tonight. I want to acknowledge that we have some of our esteemed colleagues from the school committee here, as well as the school department, and a number of department heads with us in addition to members of the public. So thank you all for being here and for your efforts. At this time, I will turn it over to our town manager, Mr. Hall. Jeff?
Good evening. In accordance with Chapter 592 of the Acts of 1950, it is my duty and responsibility to provide the Select Board and Finance Committee with the projected expenditures and revenues for the fiscal year 2024, which begins July 1, 2023. The documents I am speaking to are both the operating budget and the capital improvement plan for the period fiscal '24 through fiscal '28. The COVID pandemic and its variants have been a central focus for the past three years. We have met the challenge, although it hasn't been easy. While COVID and its consequences are still with us, new challenges are at the center of our attention. Higher interest rates than have been seen in generations, inflationary pressures, an unstable global economy, ongoing supply chain issues, and concern over whether we're heading into a deep recession, or as the Federal Reserve is hoping, a soft landing. If only we had a crystal ball and could peer into the future, six to 18 months, to see how things played out, but unfortunately, we do not. The board, as is customary, has expressed a desire to see a minimal budget increase. Once again, a serious effort has been made to minimize increases. The total proposed budget for fiscal '24 is $129,931,393, which is an increase of $4,456,813, or 3.55% from the current budget. The breakdown, which will be seen in the next slide, shows the various categories of our overall budget. The first category is the school department. $47,658,045 is the proposed budget there, which is an increase of 3.75%. And I'll talk about some of the details shortly. Shared costs of the four categories went up the least, and shared costs are really those that, as it states, are borne by both the general government as well as the school department. It includes things like property and general liability insurance, health insurance, the debt costs, statutory charges, and Medicare employer contributions are some of the examples. General government, which is the next category, $35,201,175 reflects an increase of 4.6%. I think it's noteworthy here to note that the almost a million dollars' worth of the cost here has been associated with heating prices. Certainly, everybody who has oil heat knows the costs have gone up dramatically, and we're seeing a significant increase there, as well as addressing ALS services, advanced life support. Between those two, it's over $900,000 in those two categories alone, and I will speak to that in more particulars later on. I would also note, as you look at the town salaries, you will see in some instances salaries where it appears that the increase is higher than you would normally anticipate. I just want to clarify that when we presented the budget last year, there were several collective bargaining groups that we did not have agreements with. We did not have a COLA in place for the nonrepresented. So this year's numbers that you will see in the personnel category represent two years' worth of COLAs in addition to, in some cases, step increases or longevity increases. The Shawshin Tech, which is the third, fourth category in the overall budget scheme here, is expected to go up 15%, $7,267,806. This is a very difficult number to project as their budget process is really behind ours. It doesn't start on the same time scale. I've had conversations with Tony McIntosh, the superintendent over there, and because of the timing, there's not a lot of information he was able to offer. Last year, you'll recall the increase was a 20% increase. We believe that it may be slightly less based upon the enrollments. Some of the major factors that are playing into this year's budget increase are both the increases in the Shawshin Tech assessment, as noted, the heating oil costs, costs attributed to advanced life support, the program that we're going to look to adjust in health insurance, as well as certainly dealing with the Wildwood intermediate plan to accommodate those folks. With respect to revenues, we are once again budgeting our revenues or estimating our revenues in a very conservative way. I would just note that the development of revenue estimates is not a precise science, so to speak. We're looking at a timeframe, six to 18 months into the future. There's a lot of circumstances that are beyond our control, the state of the economy, the ability of the state to keep local aid at its existing levels or perhaps increase it slightly. The levels of construction here locally, whether it's construction of new homes or construction of businesses, which, as you know, contributes to real estate values and new growth, car sales, which are part of the motor vehicle excise tax revenue that comes in, and also, quite frankly, the degree to which people eat out locally, because that also contributes to the meals tax. So all those things have to be factored in. Underestimating revenues means that excess revenues go to the general fund and ultimately into free cash. And as a practical matter, for many years now, it's been my practice to be very conservative in terms of our revenues. Overestimating revenues requires budget cuts, and certainly that can be very problematic, because typically, when we become aware of that revenues are falling behind projection, we're anywhere from six to nine months into the fiscal year, which becomes very problematic to try to dial back expenses for individual departments. I would note that many years ago, back in the late 80s, we did have a situation where revenues were projected in excess of actuals, and that contributed to a period in which we had negative free cash, and really, it took a few years and some fairly significant budget adjustments to get back into a positive place. So if I had to err on one side or the other, I'd certainly rather underestimate revenues than overestimate revenues. The largest source of revenue, as you can see by this diagram, is clearly the real estate tax, and it's inching its way towards 80%. It's noteworthy, for the first time since Proposition 2 and 1/2 was adopted in 1980, the town did not increase its taxes to the levy limit. One of the fundamental elements of Proposition 2 and 1/2 is that cities and towns have the ability to increase their levy by 2 and 1/2% of the previous year's levy. In this case, knowing that the value of property in Wilmington had really gone up substantially, the decision was made to not increase the tax to the levy limit in an effort to blunt some of the consequences on property taxes paid by both residents and businesses. So we are actually $1.2 million below the levy at this point, based upon that decision. Another element of the property tax is new growth, which is the value associated with new construction, whether it's homes or new commercial buildings that are put up. Again, we consistently estimate new growth to be on the conservative side, and again, this year, we're estimating that to be $1.1 million. I would note that this past, this current fiscal year, new growth came in at $2,426,892, which is certainly a much higher number. The vast majority of that new growth, however, was attributed to personal property. So when a business purchases or changes out equipment, capital equipment in their, in their operation, that is taxed, and that revenue becomes a personal property. That's clearly something that is very difficult to predict as to when companies are going to change out their equipment, and so we try to be very conservative in our estimates there. Ultimately, the total, total value of the real estate taxes is $102,947,392. The next largest category of revenue, which is a distant second, is local aid, and that makes up about 11.5% of the budget, and we're estimating that at $15,49,313. Again, we're anticipating level funding. The state, you know, has been, in my estimation, very helpful to the cities and towns in spite of their challenges in dealing with COVID and all the associated costs. They have maintained local aid. In fact, this past year, it saw a slight increase of about $390,000. Local receipts, which is the third category of revenue, consists of fees from building permits, from health permits, licenses that the Board of Selectmen may issue, town clerk, and this makes up about 5%, 5.5% of the overall revenue stream, $7,155,448. And then the final category, other available funds, includes the use of free cash, capital stabilization, and indirect charges. So for example, the Water Division, which is a special revenue fund, the revenue that's generated from the water billing, we charge a portion of their costs, whether it's insurance, their property insurance, auto that's attributed to the Water Department and the employees in that department. Those costs, those expenses get charged to the Water Department, and that constitutes revenue for us. With respect to priorities, education continues to be clearly a top priority. I think it's fair to say every community wants the next generation to have access to resources that will provide them with the greatest opportunity for success. Those resources, however, are not unlimited. As parents, we recognize there are limits to our ability to pay for sports programs, music, art, and acting programs, and education beyond high school. The town is no different. Funds are made available to the fullest extent possible, recognizing that we still need to plow snow to respond to medical emergencies, to address crime, and to respond to human service needs throughout the community. After two years of 2.5% budget increases, the recommended increase for the school department's operating budget is 3.75%. Some of the issues that the school department will be dealing with is addressing the costs associated with teacher contracts, the prospect of a contract with their teachers' aides. In fact, $1.24 million worth of their increases are attributed to salary adjustments, which is the vast majority of their proposed budget increase. Additionally, the State Operational Services Division, which is an agency within the Executive Office Administration and Finance, advised superintendents this fall that their out-of-district rates for out-of-district special education programs would be going up as much as 14%. This is quite honestly unheard of, as for the last 12 years or so, it's my understanding that those rates have averaged about a 2% increase. So this is clearly going to be a challenge for the school department. Also, they're in the process of bidding for transportation services. Their existing contract, as I understand it, expires at the end of this fiscal year, and the expectation is there that transportation costs could increase as much as $110,000. In addition, they're seeking to create opportunities for more students to remain in district, which certainly has a number of benefits, including the fact that these students can remain in Wilmington, be in familiar surroundings, perhaps with friends, but also, it may reduce the out-of-district costs substantially. Other issues that are certainly in play here, as we all know, back in March of 2022, $1.2 million was approved for the next stage of our work with the MSBA Mass School, Mass School Board of Building Authority, and that money is to be used for the hiring of an owner's project manager and design services for going through this feasibility study. SMMA has been hired to assist the town with that process, and we are in the midst of going through the selection of a designer who will also work with us to look at the various options for a new school or alteration to an existing school. Equally important is accommodating the students and staff displaced from the Wildwood School and who are expected to be displaced over the next five to six years before a new school becomes available. Utilizing the middle school to host some students and staff from the Wildwood is a good idea. I applaud Superintendent Brand for identifying this option. The option is clearly the best of, from those that are, were considered over the last several months. The concern that I had expressed and certainly voiced more recently is a concern over the cost and also the physical impact on a building that is still only 23 years old and presumably that will be in operation for at least another 25 or 30 years. Many of the changes that would be proposed in the middle school will have to ultimately be undone once the pre-K and K students move on. After further discussions with the school department, we have agreed that efforts will be made to reduce, to some measure, the scope of construction required in the school while still providing the appropriate facilities for pre-K and K students and staff. The cost estimate for this work at the Wildwood, as part of this Wildwood intermediate plan, is budgeted for $1.1 million, which you'll recall was the amount that was recommended by the Wildwood School Building Committee and also recommended by the school committee. As the discussions took place last week, we have not had an opportunity to get revised figures, and in fact, the Doran Whittier, the firm that we've been working with, is looking at that information now, and we expect revisions soon. I would also note that of that $1.1 million that is proposed, $100,000 is slated for a place structure to be located outside of the middle school. Thanks to the efforts of Jamie McGoldy, our Public Works Director, he was able to identify an alternative. This place structure is actually a less permanent structure and can be used in other locations once this, it's no longer needed at the, at the middle school. And my proposal, which would be considered later tonight, is that the Board of Selectmen authorize the transfer of $100,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds to actually pay for this place structure. As previously noted, Wilmington saw a significant uptick in the students attending the Shawshin Tech. In October of '21, the figures represented a, actually, 36 additional students, if you just go back a slide. 36 additional students were going to the tech this October, October 1 of '22. That number is up six students. So that gives me reason to believe that our increase will not be quite as steep, although clearly there are other factors that impact our assessment, including their own costs, whether they have certainly contracts with personnel there, building maintenance issues, capital projects, the amount of state aid that is received by the tech. So all those things are clearly unknown at this point, and we're, we're using the 15% as our best estimate at this point. Next, in terms of priorities, is public safety. Certainly, it's a fundamental responsibility of the town to provide a safe place for residents and people who come here to work and visit. Over the past three fiscal years, four police officers have been added to the ranks to address the uptick in responses required. We continue to experience challenges of officers retiring and pursuing or pursuing other careers. Filling vacancies certainly takes time between just the normal recruitment process, but also working through the civil service protocols, and also the nine months that are certainly required and necessary for individuals to go through the police academy. On a positive note, I will say that we have three new officers who recently graduated from the Linfield Police Academy, and two additional officers who are starting their academy training this week. Clearly, the goal is to continue to pursue a fully-staffed department there. Central dispatch is often an unheralded but key part of the public safety team. Critical, it's critical to have individuals who are able to take calls and are unflappable under pressure and can focus on getting accurate information from the callers and conveying that out in a clear and succinct way to police and fire. This seems like a fairly straightforward job, and in some cases, I think, is underrated. We have had a number of people step into this role and ultimately determine it's not for them, and that has created a fair amount of turnover. In addition, we realized in doing some salary review of our, of their colleagues in comparable communities that we needed to make adjustments to our dispatch ranks in terms of salaries so that they're more in the middle of the pack, so to speak, and that has been done. Having reliable and state-of-the-art communications equipment is critical to assist with timely and accurate information being conveyed. This year, the town is completing its third year of a $1.3 million project to replace outdated antennas and radios and add microwave to bolster the communication capabilities. The number of calls to the fire department continues to increase, and many of those calls are medical emergencies. Chief Bill Kavanaugh obtained a federal grant in 2020 to help fund eight new positions that were approved at town meeting. That grant is expiring this March, and the town will now be responsible for assuming 100% of those costs. Wilmington firefighters are all required to be emergency medical technicians, EMTs, and provide basic life support. For many years, the town has contracted for advanced life support services, which are a higher level of service and require a higher degree of medical training by paramedics. Private ALS providers are finding it harder and harder to meet the demands of these ALS services. The demand placed on medical providers across the spectrum, as we all know, has been incredibly challenging over COVID, and the consequence of that is certainly many people leaving the medical field, and paramedics is no exception. The need exists to address the long-term ability to provide reliable and sustained advanced life support services. Last year, the chief, fire chief, put out a bid for ALS services, and two vendors responded. Both vendors provided prices that were substantially higher than the $551,000 that we currently are paying for these contracted services. Ultimately, we opted to exercise a one-year option to extend with the current provider, and fortunately, we did that because shortly thereafter, the second bidder went out of business. As it stands, this budget includes approximately $745,000 to fund a series of options for providing ALS service in-house. Some of those options would include either hiring additional personnel, eight trained paramedics that would come in and provide that service as a supplement to the existing fire department, or providing the opportunity for existing firefighters to be trained as paramedics and step into that role. In addition, we would be looking to create a position to oversee the ALS process. It is a very specialized program. The Office of Emergency Medical Services is responsible for overseeing and approving compliance with all their protocols, making sure that the appropriate training is done, that the medics are getting their certifications, the proper medications are, and equipment are in the ambulances. So those are, that is budgeted and will be in the works. Also, because the expectation is that this rollout will take some time, potentially as much as six months, we are budgeting to continue with the existing ALS program, again, not wanting to be without advanced life support. Certainly, once we're able to put this program into effect, the expectation would be that the contract with the current provider would, would be terminated. A concerted effort is underway to identify one or more suitable locations for a fire substation in North Wilmington. The fire chief and other staff have reviewed a number of sites suggested for consideration, and the fire chief has spoken with individuals about potential sites. A few leads came about from a notice that the town posted recently seeking to identify sites. At this point, I'm not recommending money in this budget for design services until we have one or more sites to consider, taking the approach similar to the one we took when the senior center and the town school admin buildings were proposed. At that time, as you know, we had sites to, to look at before we brought in a designer, and the same approach would be proposed here. Next, under the various categories, is capital improvements, the ability to conduct day-to-day operations, rely upon the safe and reliable buildings, vehicles, infrastructure, and technology. Capital requests total over $6 million for the coming fiscal year, and the capital that is proposed will be addressed using a combination of the tax levy, free is proposed will be addressed using a combination of the tax levy, free cash, capital stabilization, Chapter 90 funds, which are funds from the state specifically for road repairs and ARPA funds. Some of the items under the capital improvement include $300,000 to replace a 2006 dump truck in the Highway Department. This is proposed from free cash. $142,000 to replace a 2014 wing mower to keep the 40-plus acres of athletic fields and parks trimmed. $65,000 to replace a 2010 three-quarter-ton dump truck in the Cemetery Division. $120,000, next slide, please. $120,000 to replace a play structure at the Boutwell Early Childhood Center. As you can see, it's in need of replacement. $80,000 to continue the phased expansion of the cemetery. Some of the expansion will be going on in the area that was recently acquired on Wildwood Street, some grading and site preparation. In addition, the funds will be used for work to the existing network of roads within the cemetery. $40,000 is proposed for engineering services and to develop specifications to replace the artificial turf field at the high school. The turf field was put in in 2013 and will be proposed for replacement in 2026. $40,000 is proposed to resurface the tennis courts at the Boutwell School. Certainly, the picture speaks a thousand words there. And then $104,000 in total in town technology upgrades. In one instance, the $54,000 is the third year of our upgrade to our voice-over IP phone system, specifically to the public safety building. And then $50,000 is proposed for technology in the police cruisers, computers specifically. $250,000 is proposed for replacement of four frontline police cruisers. This is proposed from free cash. $67,000 is proposed for the replacement of a fire prevention vehicle. $180,000 to purchase three cardiac monitors, which are required as part of an ALS ambulance fit-up. And then $675,000 to replace the roof at the West Intermediate School. This is proposed from capital stabilization. $170,000 to complete design services, do cost estimates for window replacements at the West Intermediate School. And then $15,000 for a similar effort at the Harndon Tavern. There's something in the order of 33 windows that require replacement. The idea here is to have the specifications develop, cost estimates with the expectation that the following year, funds would be sought for the actual cost of replacing the windows. And then $1.1 million for the repurposing of certain areas within the middle school, and this would be proposed for funding from free cash. And certainly, as you can see, these are some of the points as to why this would be an important project to pursue. $76,000 is proposed to replace a school minivan, which is high mileage and has need for repairs. $45,000 is proposed to continue the process of replacing the public address system throughout the schools. And then $200,000 is proposed to replace the school department's voice-over IP phone system. The full summary is here in broad categories. You'll see Chapter 90, the vast majority of that, about $70,000 is for road paving projects throughout town, tax levy, free cash, all of the, in the case of the water, the bulk of that, $1 million is proposed for replacing a water line along Forest Street. And then the Sewer Enterprise Fund is $30,000 for a pump station that needs to be replaced. The town will be engaging in a significant amount of borrowing in the years to come. I would note that we're not looking to do any borrowing immediately for the two projects that were approved at the special town meeting. We have between the money approved from free cash and the capital stabilization fund, we believe that we have enough money for the immediate term to not have to issue a bond anticipation note. However, next year, we expect to engage in long-term borrowing for not only those projects, but also the Nassau Ave water tank, which you recall was replaced a couple of years As a consequence, we're going to be having to deal with Standard and Poor's as we do in any time we borrow, and they have consistently rated Wilmington High with regard to its reserves, but continue to express concerns about our ability to deal with OPEB and pension In the past, questions that they have raised center around whether we can continue to still put money aside for these purposes. So once again, I'm proposing that we use $1.5 million from the tax levy to prepay on our pension liability. This will accelerate the payment of that liability, which is due to be fully paid off in 2037. Certainly, to the extent that we can accelerate that and pay it off sooner, we can focus more of our attention on OPEB, which is essentially our liability related to health insurance. With that $1.5 million contribution, it would bring up a total prepayment of $8.5 million over the last eight years. Also proposing $1 million from the tax levy be added to the OPEB trust fund, which would increase that balance to $11.5 million. Again, recognizing, quite frankly, trying to convey to Standard and Poor's that actions speak louder than words and that we've continued over these past many years now to set money aside towards these liabilities. And then finally, it's clear to me that we need to replenish the capital stabilization account. You'll recall, when we went into the special town meeting, we had just over $17 million in the capital stabilization account. $6 million of that was drawn to support the senior center. I'm proposing that we put $1 million back into that fund to bring it up to $12.3 million With regard to personnel, there are no new proposed personnel with the possible exception of paramedics if, in the end, we decide to go that route with hiring trained paramedics. However, I would like to suggest that we give future consideration to some areas where additional personnel may be required. The town right now has over 300 full-time, part-time, and seasonal employees. For many years, the assistant town manager position has also been responsible for human resources. Given the responsibilities that this human resource function entails, I can certainly envision a standalone position, and in fact, many of our neighboring communities have standalone HR directors in addition to an assistant town manager. Being responsible for recruiting and hiring, that whole process, civil service, including assessment centers for police and fire supervisory positions, the EEO reporting and OSHA reporting that has recently come online, all these tasks leave little time to assist me in other areas that are required. With respect to IT, IT, as you know, is ubiquitous to everything we do. It is ingrained in all of our work. The requirements for maintaining, the replacement schedule for hardware, resolving software issues, educating staff on more effective use of computers, and developing strategies to reduce the vulnerability of cyber attacks has this department of three, quite frankly, maxed out. Procurement is another area. Currently, we are really a decentralized procurement system in which most of the departments engage in their own procurement, certainly with assistance from my office. A few personnel do have the training from the Inspector General's office in terms of procurement, and certainly, they've shared that information with other departments. But I think we should seriously consider the prospect of a purchasing agent or procurement officer, as many communities have, and there may even be an opportunity here to share such a position with the school department and perhaps achieve some savings in terms of joint purchase of office equipment or office supplies. Planning and conservation serves as the point of contact for individuals seeking to establish business or create housing in Wilmington. That office proposes zoning bylaws intended to create opportunities for mix of development, and these functions, I would argue, in fact, are economic development, although they may not generate the same buzz as reaching out to businesses to convince them to locate here. With all of that work that is ongoing and their support of the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board and all they do, the department has little time for the work of what I would call out-facing presence, whether it's engaging with the Chamber of Commerce or reaching out to businesses. So this is something I think should be considered going forward. In conclusion, we are at the threshold of the most significant town building boom since certainly the high school and arguably since the early 1960s, when four schools, the Boutwell, North, Woburn, and West, were completed between 1961 and 1964. In addition to the two recently approved projects, we will find a location to construct a fire substation and seek funds for design and construction. Additionally, we'll be asking residents to approve what will likely be the most expensive municipal building in the town's history, which will be a new school. Maintaining strong reserves will continue to be important to offset the borrowing costs, which will be expected to increase significantly over the next five to 10 years. Those reserves must also be available for the more mundane, run-of-the-mill types of things like equipment replacement, building repairs, and technology upgrades. This budget has been prepared in a sincere attempt to limit the overall cost increases dealing with much higher fuel costs and higher costs in vehicles and equipment replacement, and the need to address advanced life support services, as well as establishing an interim plan to accommodate students and staff at the Wildwood. This budget will certainly be critiqued, which is to be expected. In the words of Rufus Miles Jr., who served in the administration of Presidents Eisenhower, Kennedy, and Johnson, "Where you stand depends upon where you sit. We each see the world through the lens of our individual experiences and belief system. The greatest challenge we all face is stepping back when confronted with differing and opposing opinions and seriously try to view matters from their viewpoint. Only then can we stand a chance, rather, to reach consensus, which is what in the end matters, to move forward constructively." The Finance Committee will begin its meetings tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM and will continue meeting on Tuesdays and Thursdays throughout the month of February, with the exception of the week of February 20th, and will continue into early March. Meetings are all posted and will take place right here in Room 9. Before closing, I wish to extend my thanks to the many individuals who have been involved in this process. Preparing this budget is certainly not a solo act. I owe a debt of gratitude to those who picked up the slack while I have been focused on the budget and to those who assisted with its development. To the department heads, who all work within the parameters that they have been given and each year submit budgets that are reasonable. To Glenn Brand and Paul Regiro, who have been professional and patient during our sometimes difficult discussions. I recognize they are up against their own challenges that I cannot fully appreciate. To my staff, Wendy Martinello, who is incredibly organized and prompt with everything she does. She has multiple roles split between procurement, assisting with HR, dealing with civil service, and a variety of other tasks. She is finishing her final couple of miles on her run of over 17 years with the town and will be retiring in April, and she will be truly missed. Kathy Godfrey, who's tucked away in a room without windows and does an awful lot for our retirees in making the transition that they go through from an active employee to be being retired and dealing with a host of questions about benefits. Thank her for her efforts. Also to Tom Dunnehugh, who's our newest addition to the office. Every day, he demonstrates what I call a youthful exuberance and has such a positive effect on everyone in the office, treats everyone, employees and the public, with a great deal of courtesy and just a real pleasant demeanor. He's been a utility player in terms of working on a number of projects for the town. And then certainly Beverly Dalton, who's my go-to with respect to any issues requiring institutional knowledge. She maintains a firm handle on all of the licensing and permitting that the board is required to deal with, in addition to making sure that town topics, the town report, the Finance Committee report, and the town calendar all go out on time. And for the key players who were involved in preparing this budget, Brian Perry has picked up where Mike Morris left off. He is calm and collected and knows municipal finance. He's been the point person in terms of putting together the CIP in addition to working on the operating budget, and I can't tell you how many times I've asked him to revise one number or another over the last week or so, and he does it in stride. Also to Andrea Dimitriades, who's the Assistant Finance Director. She's been very involved in all the edits on the budget, in addition, particularly focused on our personnel book. Appreciate her efforts. She's new to our organization, but has been a real quick study. To Jamie McGoldy's staff, in particular Diane Forrest, who updates the information on our equipment book. And certainly, last but not least, Susan Inman, the Assistant Town Manager and HR Director. In fact, her first year anniversary will be tomorrow, and certainly, she has been a quick study, really jumped into the process here, was responsible for looking at all of our insurances and preparing our insurance budget and much of the narrative in the CIP. And quite frankly, I didn't really have an awful lot of time to work with her on that, and so just demonstrating that she can really get up to speed very quickly on these things. So with all that said, thank you for your time and for listening, and with that, I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hall. I appreciate that very much, your presentation, and we look forward to vetting this and hearing more from you over the coming weeks. Before we open it up for questions and comments from my colleagues, I too want to send our sincere thanks to the administrative team, yourself, the Assistant Town Manager, Director of Finance, and, as you mentioned, those who work diligently behind the scenes, specifically Wendy, Bev, and others, and I want to congratulate Wendy on all the work she's done in her upcoming retirement. And as you mentioned, it's those who work in the office behind the scenes that do quite a bit of work, and I also want to compliment Wendy on her recent extraordinary baking skills that my kids benefited from the last trip into the office. So thank you all for your work, and Jeff, thank you for your thorough presentation and for all your work leading up to tonight and beyond. This will be available on our town website in short order, and this will be available in the manager's office for those interested. As I mentioned at the onset, I want to thank our colleagues on the school committee for their partnership, the various department heads who are here, members of the Finance Committee that are here, and thank you in advance for what you'll do over the next coming weeks and months. And with that, I will start by taking questions and comments from my colleagues, and then, if anybody in the audience would like to ask a question or comment, we'll open it up to you as well. So is there anybody who would like to make a comment or ask a question?
I have one.
Mr. DePaul.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, you had mentioned possibly putting on an HR director or assistant HR director or someone in that capacity. or someone in that capacity.
Well, I'm not suggesting that in this budget. I'm suggesting that going forward, we give some serious thought to looking at having a standalone HR position. I think, as I indicated, many communities have been doing this for some period of time. I think it certainly has merit, given the complexity and the volume of work that's required in terms of HR. Just from my perspective, you know, quite frankly, right now, a good portion of the work that Susan is doing is HR-related, which makes it very difficult for me to delegate other things because, you know, she's, her bandwidth is on HR.
I agree with that wholeheartedly. I also would recommend that when you do start looking at that position, you also look at it as a combination position for someone who can research and write grants also for the town. Make it a combination of the two. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Mr. Hall, for the presentation, and I want to thank your department heads, your town manager's staff for the, for the work that is done not only throughout the year, but I'm sure that it was a long process and many hours to put this budget together. So I want to recognize everyone and thank them for their efforts. Just a couple of takeaways that I noted real quickly in seeing this. I thank you for providing this to us Friday evening. Usually we get this report tonight, but haven't had a real chance to go through it just a little bit. And some of the takeaways that I got from it, it's the first time since Prop 2 and 1/2 that we're not taxing to the levy.
Yes.
So I guess that's pretty good for us taxpayers, right? We're saving some money there, which is great. So it leaves a little bit money on the table, so to speak, but how does that work going forward? So next year, when we come up to this situation, can we tax to the levy? Or because we're only taxing to a certain point, and I don't know what that is, 2 and 1/4 or 2%, what, is it, does the law say we can only go to what we're going to today?
We could access, we could access that additional levy capacity. The consequence, of course, would be the impact on taxes.
Right.
Right.
So next year, and I don't know if Mr. Perry can answer this, is there something that now that we have not taxed to the levy?
Just for the current year.
Okay.
The levy limit is what the levy limit is, regardless of what we tax up to.
Right.
So next year, the levy limit will be based on what the current year's levy limit is. So you can basically recoup that the next year if you wish to tax to the max than the following year. You just lose it all to this current year.
Not that I'm suggesting that we tax our residents and citizens of Wilmington any higher than they need to be taxed, but it's good to know that if a situation occurs, that there's the opportunity to recoup that, you know. And then you mentioned, a little confused on this, we have the 1.1 million for the Wildwood education, the renovation to the middle school, the 1.1 that you're keeping on the table.
Yes.
And you mentioned that, that we're going to, that Jamie McGoldy's doing $100,000 play structure, which is great, saving from, I think, what they initially said, $800,000 or something, which I think was kind of crazy, but. So you'd mentioned that the 1.1 includes the $100,000, and then you mentioned that tonight the board is going to vote on taking $100,000 from the ARPA fund for the playground. So I guess I'm a little confused, because I don't want to take money from the ARPA funds if we don't have to. So is the $100,000 coming out of that 1.1 million, which initially was much higher than that, or are we taking it from the ARPA funds?
The proposal is to include the 1.1 in the budget, again, trying to recognize the prospect of, well, essentially going with the recommendation. I would not expect we would have to use the 1.1, but since we don't have current estimates on the revised scope of work, my rationale was err on the side of being too high, and certainly between now and town meeting, if that number can be revised down, then so be it, as opposed to going the other way.
So we don't necessarily have to vote on those transfer of the ARPA funds now, because that $100,000 could be in the 1.1 million?
I would suggest, one of the advantages of being able to transfer the ARPA funds now is that we can purchase the equipment now, and I know Jamie had expressed to me some concerns about, I think it was a combination of lead time and potential cost by, you know, if we delay on that. So one of the rationales here of seeking the transfer of ARPA funds is, in part, the two sources that were identified within ARPA, I think we can spare those funds, but also it makes sense to try to put that order in now so that the equipment can be ready for the summer when it's needed.
Gotcha. But, and I'm going to keep going a little bit more. So if the 1.1, you don't need to use it all because we're putting $100,000 from the ARPA funds there, which were designated for other, other things, are you going to reimburse those? Is that $100,000 going to go back to the ARPA funds, or is that going to free cash, the remainder of the 1.1 that's, whichever left?
Well, so the 1.1 is, is a budgeted number. If it, like I say, if it turns out during the course of the next few weeks, between the information that we get back from Doran Whittier in terms of the revised scope of work, it's not necessary to, when we go to town meeting, to use that 1.1, then it can be adjusted down. But at this point in time, I wanted to err on the side of being too high as opposed to being too low.
So it would go to free cash?
Well, no. I mean, it's a, it only, well, if the, if the town were to appropriate the full 1.1 and only spent $1 million, then yes, it would go to the general fund and then free cash. But my sense is that between now and then, that number may be able to be adjusted.
Okay. And I know that $100,000 doesn't seem like a lot, but it's coming from a different source, the ARPA funds, and I don't want to hurt one if we have it in the other. So that's where I'm coming from. Regarding the unfunded liability that we have with retirement, so we're out, and I don't know if Brian can maybe respond to it, Mr. Manager. We're going out to 2037 to be fully funded with our retirement liability. So we've been tucking money away, just like you would, as you've described in the past, when you have a house and you pay off to the principal a little bit more to bring that, that down a bit. So we've been tucking quite a bit away towards that principal. So is that unfunded liability going to come down? Are we, are we still, why are we projecting out to 2037? Should we be, should we have an idea that we're going to be funded by 2035, maybe?
There's a lot of moving pieces, I think, within Middlesex valuation for the town of Wilmington. We're working on getting an updated report from the actuaries that do the work for Middlesex to kind of be able to provide the board, in essence, what the bang for the buck is for the prepayment of the retirement that we've been making the last, I don't know, seven or eight years now. To be honest, there's a lot, as I said, there's a lot of moving pieces. One of them is just the estimated rate of return of today's money in future markets, which Middlesex continues to reduce the estimated rate of return, and that, in theory, basically tips the scale to have the money today's dollar worth less in the future, which basically increases the obligation. So, and I believe as a whole, Middlesex is still working in a uniform manner. They wouldn't have one community, in theory, paid off in 2035. All the rest of the communities in there would be at 2037 or 2038, so.
Right, and that's what I thought, because I know Middlesex County encompasses about 20 or so communities.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit more than that.
And I don't know how, you know, I work in retire.
Yeah, no, I know, and the goal is to have our...
It's been kind of difficult for me to understand how we're tucking away all this money to not meet our unfunded liability sooner.
No, the goal is to essentially minimize or reduce the future payments that we have. Historically, you've seen it continues to climb upward. The next two years of figures we have are still, you know, 6.5 to 7% or so increases, and the further you go on, the more money that is. It adds up very quickly, and our hope is to essentially blunt the impact in the future for the retirement obligations for the town.
Okay. And then you get the OPEB. Would you be putting in, again, a million dollars to OPEB?
Correct.
Just for the sake of the S and P, which hasn't cooperated with us, is it worth putting in that much, or? You're going to say yes, because it's going to help with the unfunded liability, but I don't know, many communities aren't doing anything with OPEB.
The OPEB's a tough one, also. That's a nebulous calculation, trying to figure out essentially future health costs, that it's very hard to put a, put your thumb under. The challenge that we have is, we know the basement of it, is we want to pay it to the minimum of what we have the Millstack's contribution to. The maximum we'll do is a million dollars to last, I don't know, probably five or six years since before I've been here. And the challenge that Jeff mentioned every time is, we don't want to show S and P that at this point, we're unable to fulfill the trend that we look at. Every time that we go for a rating, rating review, they want to see that. It does, it does help to have the money essentially sitting in there to grow, but it's, it's a, that's a long one away from being able to resolve the OPEB.
Yeah, and I get it. I just see 1.5 million go into the reserve of the pension fund and a million go into OPEB. We could probably reduce that, since we're not, I mean, we have an appropriation, we have the evaluation that's done every two years, right, that tells us how much we're paying in the unfunded liability.
Correct.
So if we're not bringing down the 2037 to 2035 or '34, then really, what's the, I understand, yeah, but, but I guess what I'm saying is that money could be used, we have a lot of things happening.
It could be spent in other ways, that's correct. The challenge is if you don't pay for it now, is you're going to pay for it in the future, and we're trying to kind of balance the scales on that.
Yeah. It just, I always preach on that when I get to this budget, but it's just my own...
I know, I think we have it every year, yeah. Let's discuss it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Anything further? Okay, in conclusion, Jeff, I too look forward to working through this and asking questions throughout the process, and I would encourage everyone else to do the same. This is a public meeting, so if anybody would like to make a comment or ask a question, I simply ask that you just identify yourself, and we'll do the best we can to entertain it. Anybody from the audience like to make a comment, question? Not all at once. Okay. Well, just as a friendly reminder, our friends on the Finance Committee will begin their work tomorrow night in this room at 7:00. And thanks to our friends at WCTV, all those meetings will be covered and broadcast live and be able to be available on the web if you need to watch them afterwards, and I too will be taking advantage of that. And once again, we thank you for the work that they'll do in the coming weeks. Okay. If there isn't anything else, we do have quite a bit of agenda left. At this time, I'd just like to entertain a motion to briefly recess. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Take a brief recess, and we'll be right back. Thank you.
Go ahead. Which one is this?
My back.
[music][1429.51]
Okay. At this time, I'll call the meeting back to order. Thank you. We're just returning from a brief recess, if you're just joining us on WCTV. And we are about to begin our second appointment and final appointment of the night, which is with our Planning and Conservation Director, Ms. Valerie Gingrich, regarding an action plan for multifamily zoning for the MBTA communities. Good evening, Valerie.
Good evening.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
So when you're ready, the floor is yours. We appreciate you keeping us up to date. I know you have a presentation to share and look forward to it.
I do have a brief, brief presentation, very brief. This action plan that you're gonna see tonight, I prepared on behalf of the town after our previous conversation in October, where we talked about this step in the process. This action plan keeps the town in interim compliance with the requirement for the town to have a as-of-right multifamily housing district. It's very general in nature. It does not bind the town to anything. We don't, this is our sort of best guess of how this might go. And it does not require a vote from the board. I'm able to submit it on behalf of the town as a planning director to the state to keep us in interim compliance. So I wanted to run through it quickly, just so you know what's in the plan. So here we are, Wilmington, we're a commuter rail community. We have an obligation, according to DHCD, to create a zoning district that allows for 1,248 units. Do we have a rapid transit station? No, we do not. Do we have an MBTA commuter rail station? Yes, we do. See, we're flying through. Does, do we have an MBTA station that might have, located outside of Wilmington, but might have developable station area in our town? And I think we, we do. Anderson-Wuburn is less than, depending on where you're, you're measuring from, it's less than a half mile from our town border. So it might cast its half-mile circle into town a little bit, into the industrial areas along Wuburn and Industrial Way. So I checked yes for that with Anderson-Wuburn. This is me filling out the form, my information. I included Jane from my office, Tony from Engineering, who have been helping me kind of go through the compliance model spreadsheet and maps, which has, has been very interesting so far. Do we have established housing-related goals, strategies, plans? Yes, we do. And I had an attached kind of blurb on what we would say to that, including that we established the Neighborhood Mixed Use District in 2016. We've been really trying to create affordable units, the Inclusionary Bylaw in 2019. And then the Princeton Development Friendly 40B that we went through that process in 2020, and now wrapping up the 40B process with 100 West Street. So those are sort of the, some of the efforts that we've been going through to create housing and affordable housing. Are we currently working on any other plans for, planning for housing? This was kind of a strange question, because we don't have a planning process right now that's going on, but we're always planning for housing, so I just took an easy no, I don't know. It's a strange question. So they want to know a little bit about what we're thinking. We don't have any existing districts that would meet these requirements, so I checked off that it would have to be either a new overlay district or just a new base zoning And they want you to describe sort of the potential district and location. I had a small blurb that was attached, that it would be primarily focused on the half-mile distance from the main train station and the North Wilmington train station, and that we would be sort of looking at things like the groundwater protection district and some of the constraints with sewer and transportation to sort of figure out where this might be most appropriate. But it primarily has to be centered around a train station, so that's, that's the area that we're, we're looking at. What non-housing characteristics are important for us to consider when we're thinking about this? Maybe incentives for ground floor retail use, since we can't require that the ground floor be retail. The availability of sewer, the capacity of existing transportation infrastructure, avoiding groundwater protection districts that limit impervious coverage. All of those things are going to be challenges for any sort of district that has any potential for this. So putting together a timeline as a best guess, continuing to review the spreadsheet that we were provided and the maps. I guess that we were, we're doing that currently, we're gonna continue to do that for the next few months. Planning Board meeting and/or a meeting at this board to discuss kind of what we found and what our future might be with exploring a district. That could happen this spring, to give some kind of guidance on, on how to proceed. And then, should we proceed? We would be developing a zoning district over the spring, summer, and into the fall. We would test it with their compliance model in the fall. We would do a few months of public outreach gearing up to the 2024 town meeting, where we would have to vote on this district, and then submit that district after it's approved by the state to DHCD by August or so. I think we get articles back from the Attorney General. So submitting that to the state before the end of the year, which is the deadline. So that's sort of how it would unfold, should we pursue this road. And that's, that's really the form. As you can see, it's not much, it doesn't ask for a lot of details. This is what we would aim to consider. I'm happy to take any questions or direction.
Thank you very much, Valerie, and I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate the visuals, walking us through that, that's certainly very helpful. I'll open it up if any of my colleagues have questions or comments. Mrs. Maselli.
Thanks, Valerie. Let's say we move forward with it, just on that scenario, and it goes to town meeting, and it gets voted down for the rezoning. What happens then?
Then we would not be in compliance.
Okay. So that would just knock us out, and even though we said, yep, we're in, it gets knocked down, we're out?
Yeah, I think we, I think we, they have, DHCD has, has said in webinar meetings that, you know, you might want to give time for multiple town meetings, because it might not pass right away, you might need kind of several goes at it to get it right. So we could keep trying if we wanted to keep trying.
Okay. So there's that option, if we go that route, yeah.
I believe so. I think that deadline is really, I believe you can come back into compliance after the deadline, but we haven't, I don't think we've gotten that far to know exactly how that works.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. DePalma?
Just a couple of questions. One, if we do agree to this with the state, can we designate an area, or is this sort of open warfare? Like, for instance, if we said, okay, you know, we'd like to get involved with it, but we want to designate from, I'm just using streets right now, just Clock Street to Church Street, along 38, as the area that we, we would want to see developed. That's number one. And number two, do you have to have the property available to develop at that time?
I'll start with number two. You don't have to, so you don't have to have the property available, there can be other things on it. It could never be developed per this district, it just has to have the potential of that being developed. So let's say if Metro was included in the district, right? Doesn't mean you have to knock down Metro and build something else, it's just that someday, if someone wanted to knock down Metro, they could build something else that would meet this. And yes, they do want you to have a specific area that's, you know, 50, at least 50 acres, and meets all sorts of density requirements and specifics. So they would want us to designate an area.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DePalma.
And, yeah, thank you, Mr. Wendell. And just to follow up on Mr. Palmer, that designated area, is that supposed to, and I say this because I, is that supposed to allow for 1,258 units that we can't really put anywhere in Wilmington?
So that 50-acre district would have to allow for that 1,248, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't, I'm just, you know, picturing the town of Wilmington around those two areas, and I don't know where this community is gonna put 1,248 units. Any, any news on, on, since you have it in your report, on Princeton? Is that moving forward, or what's happening there?
We haven't heard anything. We, we keep hearing from different places any day now, but we've been hearing that for a while, so nothing, nothing new yet.
Yeah. And if, and I see that, it says here that West Street passed a ZBI approval, or?
ZBI closed the public hearing last week, and they'll be voting on that development at their March 8th meeting. So it's, it's basically wrapping up that process within a, they have a draft approval that's been circulating for that.
And how is that working with the sewer and all of that stuff, or is that something the Planning Board takes care of?
Planning Board, no. The sewer, we're waiting for our kind of final report from our sewer consultant to kind of tell us whether the sewer has the capacity to pump off peak. It looks like it may. So those issues are being kind of ironed out with the ZBI.
And then what happens if that goes through? Princeton still moves forward, right? I mean, I know it's, you say either one of them meets the threshold of 10%, but...
So Princeton has their comprehensive permit, that's good for a number of years, and it would still be good, you know, for those number of years, even if 100 West Street is approved as well. So we would have two projects that are approved.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Valerie, I just have one question. So if you're watching this meeting tonight, and you're watching this for the first time, you're hearing about this for the first time, and perhaps you're concerned about the possibility of having 1,200-plus new neighbors in your neighborhood, a concern that I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's a concern that all, all of us up here are sharing. Who should they voice that concern to? Where should they, where can we direct them? I could imagine that some of us may get questions even as early as tomorrow, if not tonight, if you're watching, about the possibility of, you know, upwards of 1,200 new units in their neighborhood. Where should we direct these folks to voice those concerns?
Well, I would love to talk to them. Well, no, I, any feedback is helpful, because it's really something that the, you know, it's something that we'll have to go to town meeting, right? So if, you know, depending on how folks feel about it, we should either kind of see if we can make it work. And we'll be doing, so I guess we'll be doing a lot more exploration of the issue and the model itself. I just, I'm just getting into it, to see, you know, if this parcel's in the district, with this mix of parameters, how many units do we get there? So I've been kind of looking at it that way. We'll continue to do that, so that we can have some sort of idea of, of here's what we think might be a best-case scenario, and we would look for feedback, definitely then, when we have a Planning Board meeting, or coming back to, to you all to, to talk about it in more detail, to know that, you know, what that feedback, how that guides us, so...
Okay. Thank you. I could imagine that you've got about 23,000 emails headed towards your inbox at this moment.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up, yeah, I'll call you tomorrow on this. The housing choice zoning, it's, I would assume that it goes into a, an article to the town meeting for it to be approved. Is it, you are understanding that when it goes to town meeting, is it done by a majority vote, or a two-thirds vote? And if you don't, I mean, just, I just...
I think it would be majority, because it would be an as-of-right multifamily district. But we would, the Planning Board would need to make a judgment on that. We would probably involve counsel just to make sure that we have it right. But typically, an as-of-right multifamily would be a majority vote.
Okay.
And, and maybe for the folks who weren't here for previous conversations, we've talked about a lot of concerns about this, and that it might not be the right thing to proceed with. So we're all very well aware of that, including myself, and, but, you know, what I've advocated to this board is that if we can just do a little bit of exploration with it, just to make sure that we don't find some, you know, oh, hey, this might not be so bad, or find some, some more information that, just to keep us in the game with this plan, and keep us, you know, in interim compliance while we kind of explore the topic. But fully knowing that it, it might, it might not go forward.
Yes, and, and just for viewers at home, maybe tuning in again for the first time, we did have you in a couple of weeks back, maybe a few months back now, and I think, if I recall correctly, each member of the board had some serious concerns about this possibility, and we voiced those, and I think we continue to have those concerns. And as you mentioned, we're proceeding with extreme caution here, recognizing that this could be a reality whether we like it or not. Mr. Hall?
I guess just a couple of points. The first one being, again, just to clarify, and I believe I have this correct, that if a, this district were to be established and superimposed, if you will, over a particular area of town, it, it doesn't mean that the existing uses automatically go away. So to the extent that there is housing within this area or businesses, what it does is creates the opportunity for a future property owner to say, I no longer want to have this single-family housing in this area, I want to do this kind of development, and it's a by right ability, correct?
Right. Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't kind of wipe everything away that's there, it just provides an opportunity for the future, for them to do something different, something in accordance with this type of zoning. And if we did an overlay district, we could even have it that what's there now, what's allowed there now is allowed, and then this would be something on top of that that would be also allowed. So sometimes that's done as an overlay. That gets a little bit more complicated when you have things that don't, don't always mesh together very well, but it's an option to look at.
And the other, I guess, point or question I would just raise, and we've talked about this a little bit in the past, but I know you've expressed some concern about the groundwater protection district, and certainly Wilmington, as many of us know, has a lot of areas of wetland and so on, and the groundwater protection areas are pretty pervasive throughout town. So what, what kind of limitations does that put on this kind of zoning?
Sure. So our groundwater protection district, which actually, most of the commuter rail station area is in the ground, right around it, is in the groundwater protection district, that district only allows 15% of the lot to be impervious. So buildings and pavement can only cover 15% of the lot. So that's a very small number. So if you want to go above that number, you have to get a special permit from the Planning Board if it's a commercial use. And this, the way this is written, it has to be multifamily as-of-right with no special permits. So if the groundwater protection district requires a special permit, it's my understanding that it would very much complicate, that part of the district wouldn't be meeting the, the requirement. So we have to avoid the groundwater protection district with the district, but we have to stay within a half-mile of the train station. district with the district, but we have to stay within a half mile of the train station. So it's, it's actually going to be pretty difficult to, to figure it out. So we'll see. Because I don't know that anyone wants to change the groundwater protection district. That's pretty important to, to what we're doing, so.
Maybe we can put it in Silver Lake, so you go right around Silver Lake.
Any other questions, comments, or suggestions for Valerie?
Thanks, Val.
Just thank you.
So I guess just to be clear, the, the plan would be that this would be submitted tomorrow to DHCD and keep us in interim compliance.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Okay, Valerie, thank you so much for your presentation and for your work on this, and we look forward to hearing from you again.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll be moving on. I do want to point out that at the conclusion of tonight's meeting, we'll be going to our second executive session of the evening for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining as it relates to the International Association of Firefighters Local 1370 in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3. But before that, we'll move on to communications. I'll turn to Mr. Hall, and if anybody has a question or a comment, please feel free to interrupt us. Mr. Hall?
Yes. So first is a memo from me to the board with regard to the EPA Community Involvement Plan. This document has been out there for a period of time now. The town and other parties had through January 16th to provide feedback and comments on the plan. It's basically a plan to try to engage the Wilmington public to provide information about the Olin site and try to be as user-friendly, if you will, or transparent as possible. We had our environmental consultant, Verdantis, prepare some comments. Staff critiqued it, and that comment document was submitted. The board has a copy of it. Essentially, in, in part, there were suggestions made about that this plan should note the uniqueness of the site and also provide information about the proposed redevelopment so that folks are aware of that. Next is a memo from me to the board with regard to a status on the senior center building committee project. They met back on January 11th with our architect, Dietzen Company, and our OPMP3. It was noted that the project is shifting from schematic to final design, which would require a greater level of detail. There will be some data sheets prepared for each room within the building, and the representative from Dietzen Company would be meeting with the director to go through that, and just noting that the committee will be meeting every other week. Next is a memo from me to the board with regard to the school, town school building committee, essentially going through a similar process there. We met with Johnson Roberts, the architect, and also our OPMP3 on 117. And one of the things that was discussed at that meeting is the procurement process to use. There's really two options, one being design, bid, build. The other is the CM-at-risk approach, construction manager-at-risk. Both have certain advantages and disadvantages. Certainly, one of the advantages of a CM-at-risk is it brings the contractor into the process earlier, and as a, as a result of that, they're able to work with the architect and work out some of the potential design issues sooner. And there's also certain materials that can be ordered earlier, which, given the supply chain issues that still seem to be subject to discussion, that may have some advantage. Ultimately, the committee decided to recommend the CM-at-risk approach. Next is a memo from me with regard to request to reallocate the $100,000 from the ARPA fund to utilize for this play structure that I talked about in my budget presentation. In consultation with Shelley Newhouse, the health director, she indicated that the $50,000 that was originally earmarked to address COVID-related support efforts is no longer necessary. Also, in talking with Brian Perry, our finance director, you'll recall that $100,000 was set aside for, for grant administration. We do have a, a firm that is assisting us with grant administration. I think to this point, we've spent about $2,000. He believes that it's reasonable to reallocate $50,000 and retain 50 for further grant administration. So this memo is recommending that the board consider that reallocation. Next is the memo, again, to the board, laying out the schedule with the finance committee. We start our meetings tomorrow. We'll go through a general overview of the budget, talk about revenues, and some of the general government departments, insurance and miscellaneous accounts, statutory charges. Meet again on February 2nd. Recreation, Veterans Services, Elderly Services, and Historical are on, on deck. Then again, on February 7th, which is a Tuesday, for Department of Public Works and Building, Public Buildings Department. Thursday, February 9th, is the Information Technology, Public Library and Town Clerk's Office. Tuesday, February 14th, would be Planning and Conservation, Building Inspection, and Board of Appeals, and the Board of Health. Thursday, February 16th, the Police Department, Public Safety, Central Dispatch, and Fire Department. And then Tuesday, February 28th, would be the Wilmington Public Schools. And Thursday, March 2nd, the Shawshin Tech. All these meetings start at seven. The next piece of correspondence is informing the board about information that EPA has passed on to the town. It was a letter received from Wilmington-Woolburn Industrial asking that EPA entertain a prospective purchase agreement with them. This is part of an effort on their part to ultimately acquire the property. And as far as I know, at this point, no further action has been taken by EPA. We have a memo, again, from me to the board, just providing an update on a recent Zoom session with representatives from the MBTA, providing a status on the rail crossing and rail crossing update. They provided some data on crossing incidents between October and December of 2022. The number of incidents of crossing arm issues has declined over the prior year, but they still are having instances in which the arms are being struck by vehicles. And these seem to be primarily on egress points going into the former Sweetheart property. Also, there was some discussion about the platform that is in the works for North Wilmington. We had contacted them about both the design and the type of fencing. They note that they are going to be putting up a black vinyl coated fencing as opposed to your conventional chain-linked fence, so it should have a better, a little bit more of an appeal. They also indicated that they are, would be willing to work with Princeton Properties in terms of providing an egress to that platform further up near where the platform will be located. We have correspondence regarding the Wildwood School interim plan. This was just a, an update of a meeting that took place on January 25th between Chair O'Connell, Dr. Glenn Brand, Jennifer Bryson, the chair of the school committee, and myself, to try to address issues associated with the interim plan at the middle school. Ultimately, the plan coming away from that meeting was that there's, there was one particular room that was slated to be, one particular space slated to be created into a conference room, which the school department indicated they could, could pass on, so to speak. And then another set of bathrooms that would be located in what is currently the library that they believe they could forego. And so following that, just as a, an aside, we did have a Zoom session with Doran Whittier and instruct them of our plans, and they are providing some revised cost estimates. We have a memo from Jamie McGoldy, the Public Works Director, with regard to work going on at the cemetery. Work is beginning to develop the property that the town acquired on Wildwood Street. It'll be known as Section Q, an extension of the existing cemetery. A notice of, of intent will be filed with the Conservation Commission due to its proximity to wetlands, and the concept is to have two gravel lots with upright monuments running parallel with Wildwood Street. We have a memo from Valerie Gingrich with regard to 6K Inc. It's a company that's based in North Andover, and they've approached us about pursuing a TIF. You'll recall, this was the last time, or the only time we've granted a TIF was with Analog. There is a desire to have a, a meeting. They're looking to discuss this, and what I would propose is that we take an approach similar to the one previously taken. We would have a, a committee to discuss the merits and also meet with them as needed. And I would ask, and this will be coming up under board, to consider that a representative from the Board of Selectmen, or Select Board, serve on that committee as well as a member of the Finance Committee. Also, we have an email from Dan Deutsch, Special Counsel, with regard to Olin and the NET proposal. He's just noting that the Service Transportation Board, which, as you recall, for many years now has been requiring update reports every three months, is suspending that reporting requirement for now until either 60 days after Olin and EPA enter a consent agreement, or 60 days after the town and NET and Wilmington-Woolburn Industrial become aware of a consent agreement. And then finally, we have communication from Verizon Cable, which is a requirement by the Department of Telecommunications and Cable. Nope, sorry, did I skip one?
Yeah, Dr. Brand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. So Dr. Brand is looking for a representative from the board to serve on a strategic planning committee. This process takes place every three years, and so they're looking to update their plan. They will be meeting, I think their first meeting is actually scheduled for March, February 2nd, February 7th, I'm sorry, February 7th, from 2:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon. And then they also have additional meetings beyond that, but looking to see if a member of the Board of, the Select Board would be interested in serving. And then finally, as previously noted, communication from Verizon, their annual complaint filing report, which is, is required by state regulation. The only note there is that with regard to service interruptions, they ranged from impacting 10, which was the lowest number, to a high of 2,703 individuals on, at certain dates during calendar 2022.
Okay, thank you very much. We're moving into Board to Consider. Please, Mr. Hall.
Yes. So under Board to Consider, there is a request from Valerie Gingrich that the board sign off on the local initiative program compliance certificate. This happens each time there's a sale of property in a, in area that has affordable units, in this case, Whispering Pines Condominium, Unit 2305. There's a sale there, and the requirement is to make sure that the unit is going to remain as an affordable unit. So the checks have taken place, and that will be the case. So it's the recommendation that the board authorize that action.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, the motion's by Mr. DePalma. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and second. Any discussion?
Yeah, is the, is it, Mr. Wendell, is it to be signed off by the, by you, Jeff, as the town manager, or by Judy, as the chairman of the board? Do you know?
Uh, let's see, I'm just looking at that now. Well, it looks like it just is one signature, so I guess it would be the-
It's the CEO.
Yeah. So, well, yeah, CEO being the Select Board. So in this case, it would appear that it would be the chair.
Right. So is it okay to, I mean, do you feel comfortable voting, well, the chair here?
I, I think there's no question that, that it merits approval. This is, the process has been done to check the particulars on the transaction to confirm that it's, will remain an affordable unit. So I, I see no problem in the board taking a vote to authorize, authorize this.
And then if she did object in the near future, then you would let us know, and we can, we can vote for our opinion of it tonight, and if the chair has objection, then we can revisit it, I guess.
Yeah, I, I would want to check with Valerie on this, only because I, I just want to confirm that there isn't a time sensitivity to this.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, even if we voted right, it's going to be whatever, if it's to the majority. I just want to make sure-
Right.
You know, that Judy is-
No, I can, I appreciate that, Mr. Kyra.
Okay.
Okay, so there is a, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Next, under board to consider is a request from Christopher Neville on behalf of the Rotary, looking to have an event at Silver Lake. This is part of Rotary's, part of their pro, regular program where they have this pull or plunge, so to speak, and they're proposing to do this on March 18th at Silver Lake at 11. It's really a fundraiser for ALS. I've talked to Brett Sowen, the Rec Director, and also Police and Fire are aware of it. We don't have any concerns. I think the plan will be, will have, just have a representative there to open the bath house so that they can get out of their wet clothes after they've made the plunge and, and get into some dry clothes. But other than that, it's pretty, it should take about 40, 40 minutes or so, I guess.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
The next request is Deanna DiGregorio, President of the Wilmington Community Fund, to use the municipal parking lot on Saturday, September 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. for the purpose of a community shredding event. You'll recall that this has become an annual event at this point, and I think it's been valued by folks in town who are looking to get rid of documents.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Motion's been made by Mr. Kyra.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Micelli. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Next is a request of John Romano, past president, Wilmington-Sons of Italy, to use the municipal parking lot in Fourth of July Building for their annual antique and collector's car show on Sunday, October 17, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. over the rain date of Sunday, October 23rd, 22nd, rather. There are no conflicts.
Make a motion to approve the request, but I think you said October 17th. I have 15th down here.
Oh, is it 15th?
I don't know. I-
Let me just-
Check the calendar, just- Check the calendar, just to make sure.
So...
Sunday to Sunday.
Uh, it is, uh, 15th, I'm sorry, you're right.
The Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah, October 15th, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Yep.
Rain date, Sunday the 22nd.
So a motion's been made with the correct date, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
Uh, next is a request, uh, to reallocate the ARPA funds from the, for the installation of a play structure next to the middle school.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Micali, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. DePalma, discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you.
Uh, board to consider the request of Daniel Hall, uh, Chairman, uh, Board of Library Trustees, to sponsor a town meeting article naming the conference room at the Wilmington Memorial Library, the Christina Stewart Room. As you know, she'll be retiring in September.
So moved, I'll make a motion to accept that.
Motion's been made by Mr. DePalma, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Micali, any discussion?
This is a, a fitting tribute, uh, to Tina Stewart, for sure, but, uh, what conference room are they talking about? Because isn't, there's, the conference room is upstairs, that's already named after...
There's the Banda Room, but then this is the larger room.
Oh, okay, I just want to make sure that they...
Right.
All right.
Fitting is correct, absolutely. Any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. It is unanimous, thank you.
Uh, next is a board to consider appointing a member of the board to serve on the Wilmington Public Schools Strategic Plan Development Committee.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table this until, um, the chair is here, to giving her an opportunity, if she so, you know, feels that she wants to serve on this committee as well, I mean...
Okay, the motion's been made by Mr. Kira, is there a second?
Second that.
There is no discussion under a motion to table?
Just postponing until next meeting, or next meeting.
Table to next meeting.
Just to clarify.
On the next meeting, she's here.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor? It's unanimous, that'll be tabled, thank you.
And then the final board to consider is a request of Linda Caruso, um, for a blood drive, uh, she's actually the blood drive chairman for the Wilmington Sons of Italy, uh, to use the municipal parking lot on, and the July 4th building for a blood drive on Saturday, February 25th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Micali, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. DePalma, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you.
Okay, and I guess we did have one final, uh, the board to consider, the, um, uh, request to have a representative, uh, serve on the Tax Incentive, uh, Financing Committee.
Again, I would, yeah, again, I'd like to table to the next meeting that, uh, Chairman O'Connell was, uh, here for this as well.
Motion's been made by Mr. Kira, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, there's no discussion under a motion to table, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Public comment, would anyone like to make a public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to announcements, does any members have any announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business, any member have any new business? I can take a hint. All right, we're moving on to important dates, Mr. Hall.
Important dates, uh, January 31st. Uh, certainly, uh, one important date is, uh, the fact that it's, um, Beverly Dalton's birthday.
Aww.
Uh, but beyond that, uh, we also have the Finance Committee, uh, first of several meetings, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM, uh, the FY '24 Budget Overview, Revenues and General Government. Uh, then February 1st, Town Hall, School Administration, Building Committee, uh, here in Room 9, 6:00 PM. February 2nd, again, Finance Committee, uh, 7:00 PM, Recreation, Veterans, Elderly Services, Historical. February 3rd, uh, last day to submit petition warrant articles for inclusion on the warrant, the annual town meeting on April 29. Uh, February 7th, Finance Committee meeting here at Room 9, 7:00 PM, Public Works, Public Buildings. Uh, February 9th, Finance Committee, uh, here in Room 9, IT, Public Library and Town Clerk. February 13th is the next Select Board meeting here at 7:00 PM. February 14th, Finance Committee, Room 9, 7:00 PM, Planning and Conservation, Building Inspector and Board of Health. February 16th, Finance Committee, Room 9, 7:00 PM, Police, Publics, uh, Public Safety Dispatch and Fire. Uh, February 20th is President's Day, Town Offices Closed. Uh, February 27th is another Select Board meeting here at 7:00 PM. Uh, the 28th is a Finance Committee meeting, 7:00 PM, Wilmington Public Schools. March 2nd, Finance Committee, uh, here at Room 9, 7:00 PM, Shawshin Technical School District. February 13th is a Select Board, uh, meeting at 7:00 PM. Uh, March 21st is a Finance Committee Planning Board, uh, public hearing in the auditorium at 7:00. Uh, March 27th is a Select Board meeting, uh, here in Room 9, 7:00 PM. And then April 12th, last day to register to vote, uh, in the annual town elections and annual town meeting. Town Clerk's office will be open until 5:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, and lastly, we have...
Oh, sorry, just wanted to mention, you missed the senior center meetings on there.
Oh, did I?
Thank you.
Yeah, they go every other week, the next one will be on February 8th, and then...
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so February 8th?
February 8th, the 15th, then it'll be March 1st, 8th, like that.
We'll have all that information clearly posted.
Yep, no problem.
Yes, thank you for that. Any other important dates we may have missed? Okay, happy birthday in advance to Beverly as well. Uh, lastly, our salute to service tonight, it's my, uh, my privilege on behalf of the Board of Selectmen to present to, um, Wilmington Police Officer Nicholas Knopfle, who joined the Army Reserve National Guard in 2002, was activated in 2003 in support of Operation Enduring Freedom and served in Cuba. He was activated in 2005 in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom and served in Iraq where he was awarded the Bronze Star. Activated again in 2011, he served in Afghanistan, then reactivated in 2012 for another tour in Afghanistan. Among Nick's many awards are the Armed Forces Reserve Medal with M device and 10-year Bronze Hourglass, Excellence in Competition Rifleman Badge, Excellence in Competition Pistol Badge, Non-Commissioned Officer Professional Development Medal, NATO Medal, two Army Accommodation Medals, a Joint, uh, Unit Medal, a Combat Action Medal, and the German Army, uh, Marksmanship Badge, uh, Bronze Medal, and I'm sure I may even missed a few or mispronounced it. Uh, nonetheless, he has earned every one of those, and as you all know, he is a member of the Wilmington Police Department. Tonight is bittersweet, he will be, uh, relocating with his family, uh, and will be leaving us, uh, and although he's a valued member of our Wilmington Police Department, we wanted to honor him, uh, tonight for his service to our community and obviously for his tremendous service to our country. We thank him and we wish him and his family all the best moving forward. Uh, and with that, uh, we will, uh, be entertaining a motion, uh, to adjourn, uh, to executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect of collective bargaining as it relates to International Association of Firefighters, Local 1370, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, and not to return. Is there a motion?
So moved.
As stated, it's been made by Mr. DePalma, seconded by Mrs. Micali, all those in favor? It is unanimous, good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.